All right, we'll be calling this meeting to order Wednesday, February 26, 2025. This is a work-study session tonight. We have two items on the agenda. For anybody that hasn't noticed, we're, as a board, are holding a lot more study sessions to make sure that everybody's up to speed. We have some newer members of the board, and we want to make sure everybody has got all the information that they need. And it's always good for us to refresh ourselves as well. So, tonight, Trustee Yamazaki will be serving as clerk. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I'll move it. Trustee Yamazaki, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Pelley, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to public comment. And tonight, since this is a special meeting, public comment is limited to only the two items that are on the agenda. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do.
And which item does that go to?
We have one for item A, and then we have three for item B.
Okay. What we have been doing up to now is to have the presentation and then have public comments, so that whoever wants to comment will have the benefit of whatever has been presented to the board. And sometimes that can help you guide your public comments as well. So, if we could start with item 3A, Knoll Ranch Trail?
Thank you, Board President, trustees, Board President Erickson, and good evening, trustees, community members, both here and attending virtually. This evening, we are pleased to welcome representatives from the City of Anaheim, Principal Civil Engineer Ralph Contreras, and Project Manager Marco Bravo, who will deliver a presentation to the board. The purpose of their presentation is to provide an overview of a proposed project for which the city is seeking the district's support. The City of Anaheim has secured a grant and is proposing to establish a bicycle trail behind Canyon High School, which would necessitate the use of district property. I wish to emphasize that no action will be taken tonight. This presentation serves as an opportunity for the board to receive information directly from the city representatives and pose any questions. Following tonight's presentation, district staff will collaborate with the board on determining next steps through future board meetings. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Contreras to begin the presentation.
Good evening, Board Presidents and trustees, and the communities, community meeting, community members viewing tonight. I'm here representing the City of Anaheim, Public Works Department, to provide an overview on the proposed Knoll Ranch Open Space Trail project. I appreciate the opportunity. Tonight, I'll be covering the following items. I think everyone has a, does everyone have a copy of the presentation?
We do.
You got it going. I don't know. So, tonight, I'll be covering the following items, the communities. Thank you. Start again. Tonight, I'll be covering the following areas of the project: the communities, the cities, community outreach effort, the project's scope and alignment, and we'll focus on the alignment proposed within the Canyon High School property; the project's features and benefits; key partnerships needed to implement the project approval; and I will highlight important considerations, and ultimately, I'll provide a project timeline. Most recently, the, most recently, the city received a public outreach for this project that took place on January 23rd, 2025. During this meeting, we engaged in the community on several key topics. We presented the latest project alignment, including the proposed bike trail section along Canyon High School, adjacent to the back of the neighboring single-family homes. Community feedback included some of the highlights: a strong turnaround, turnout, and productive discussion for new bike lanes, safety improvements, and connectivity enhancements. Residents expressed support for creating a safer, more accessible environment for cyclists and pedestrians. The use, the trail use, funding, and construction planning, which I will also discuss as part of the presentation as well. And we, and we received some residents specifically asking about project advocacy and how they could support the project moving forward. The, the Knoll Ranch Open Space Trail project proposes to construct a new Class 1 bikeway and a separate adjacent pedestrian hiking trail. The Class 1 bikeway, also referred to as Bike Path, is a fully separated dedicated bike path for bicycles and pedestrians. Unlike bike lanes on roadways, Class 1 bikeways provide a safer and more comfortable experience by ensuring a physical separation from motor vehicle traffic. This, this type of bikeways ideal for all ages and skill levels, making it a great option for the community, recreation, and for school access. Here's the project proposed conceptual alignment at a high-level view. The project will commence at the intersection of Knoll Ranch and Anaheim Hills Road and travel west and then turn north to connect to the existing Class 2 Bike Path along Santa Ana Canyon Road. At a closer view here, starting at the southeast portion of the trail, at the intersection of Knoll Ranch and Anaheim Hills Road, here is at the bottom of the screen. The red highlighted trail is the pedestrian portion, and the blue highlighted trail is the proposed Bike Path. The, the bike and pedestrian path runs parallel, immediately adjacent to each other at first, but then, as, as we travel west, it separates depending on the terrain. As we continue further west, we have our first connectivity point here with our Anaheim Canyon Hills Library. Eventually, we receive our crossing here at Scotts Trail, where the two trails have separated based on, due to downhill grades of the hillside. The grades for the bike trail standards allow for only a maximum downhill grades, and the current terrain will, will require the separation. However, we are looking at consideration of the engineering plans to see if we could bring those two crossing connections back into one. Regardless if we have one or two connectivity points here, we'll propose upgraded, well, actually, we'll propose a ADA class, excuse me, ADA-compliant pedestrian ramps and a high-visibility crosswalks, as well as the newer, safer, rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RRFBs. I'll also highlight here that Scotts Trail is a known as a local lock drop-off and pickup area for students, where they would be dropped off and then walk along an existing dirt path that turns, that transfers into a partially paved road. On the high, excuse me, the northern portion here is where the trail will connect into the existing trail. I'd also like to highlight here on the red is the connectivity that they will terminate here at the Imperial Park and an existing park. Entering here is only where we would go through the bike trail, and we would connect to the existing partially paved, what we were calling a maintenance road, which serves as a functional trail currently by the residents in the community. Here, with the widening portion of the existing cross-section, we would require a retaining wall at, at the corner, at the curve here. When we travel northbound, then we would propose a rail here for safety element for separation of the vertical downhill slopes. Here, as we continue further north, we have our connectivity point with Canyon High School, an existing trail, which we would propose to improve as part of the Bike Path. As we continue further along, here's a cross-section visual of, that we envision proposing with a retaining curb to, to prevent the slope erosion and a fully paved road, excuse me, Bike Path Road. On the most northern section of the, of the trail, we would connect to the existing Class 2 Bike Lane, and we would still maintain access to the, the field for school activities. Just to highlight some of the project features which I may and may have not mentioned, some of the elements include the ADA curb ramp access, a fully paved surface, the RRFBs for enhanced crossings, rails, trash receptacles at strategic scenic points, one, one water fountain, interpretive signage, and benches. To highlight some of the project elements, as part of the Bike Lane, would reduce congestion of the roadways, increase our health benefits, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce parking shortages near school, increase connectivity, and enhance the existing school trail at the rear entrance. Some of the partnerships needed here, for the right-of-way, we, we would work with the school district and three private property owners to ensure that we could make, have that, secure the rights needed to implement the project. There are some existing access rights, steps encroaching onto the existing school property that we, as a part of the, the project, will propose to resolve, and will have to consider construction impacts during the, the local construction, limited noise ordinances, and work closely with the school district to, to minimize disruptions. In regards to the right-of-way, I would have to mention that at night at this time, we're, at a later time, we would request easement rights for the bike trail within the school property. Currently, this, this city has committed to propose, to provide plans, some mittles for the school district for review. Implications to consider: safety and security. As part of, of the proposed trail, the city would take on ownership and would post the existing city code and enforcement, as well as we would propose an educational outreach component as, for the bikers and it, excuse me, as well as an educational outreach component for use of the bike trail. Potential impacts for the adjacent trees. When we implement our, our cross-section there, we visually are concerned about a few trees that we would work with our city arborists to preserve, and if needed, we would plant or at the request of the school district, plant additional trees. The, the city as part of the project and easement rights would take on the ownership and response, maintenance responsibilities for the trail moving forward. In regards to our project timeline, we're working on redesign and updating our existing environmental document. As part of, as part of that effort, we propose completion of, in spring of 2026. The right-of-way phase, we have partially initiated and will complete it in the same time, spring of 2026, with our construction grant funding estimated to be constructed at fall of 2026 to summer of 2027. I'd like to close, then provide, excuse me. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge valuable input of, of involvement of the school board and the staff in shaping the project. Your engagement has played a crucial role in refining our plans to ensure that we meet the needs of the, of the residents in our community. At this time, I will take addition, any questions?
Yes. Do you mind if we take our public comment first, and then the board can ask questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one public speaker, and I'll go ahead and read the guidelines first. Persons wishing to speak should submit a blue comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on the agenda items only. The board shall limit the total time for public input, input on each item to 30 minutes. A speaker shall not yield to another person any portion of the time allotted to him or her to speak. The total time for agenda items shall be 30 minutes. This time allowed for those, sorry, the time allowed for those who made requests to speak will be as follows. I don't think it applies to the situation, so I'm not going to go ahead and read it, but, yeah, I think we're good. Thank you. So, we have one public speaker, and name is Stuart Dunham.
I was just gonna, if I had questions, I was gonna get up and ask. I didn't, I don't really have any questions right now.
Okay. So, this is a, you want to go ahead and explain, or? I don't know if, so, this is the board's meeting, and so, what we do is we deliberate after we hear things, but in this instance, we're not going to be voting, but if you had any input, you can go ahead and speak.
Right. This is your opportunity during public comment to, you can raise whatever questions, and we can ask them of the speakers when you're done.
But there will not be an opportunity to speak after.
I went to the meeting that they, we had it up in, at the library last time.
Okay.
And they had an entrance in going into Leandro.
Do you want to come up and speak at the podium? This will be your public comment. It's your opportunity, so your questions may be questions we have as well, so it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you have three minutes.
I was just at the meeting that we had over at the library, and they had an entrance in from, was it Santa Ana Can, no, the street behind, by where the trails are, going in towards Leandro Street. And I'm a member of the HOA board that's in that area, and I talked to all the residents around there, and they do not want an entrance coming into our streets from those trails. And I was just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that is it?
Thank you. Thank you. We were provided this presentation a couple days ago, so everybody, I'm sure, has had an opportunity to review it. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Trustee Thomas. Do you have any questions or comments? Trustee Pelley?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just had a clarification, and I, it's just hard for me to see this on this map. Where, where the trails are, are connecting with the schools, is there any additional gate that would need to be opened? Or, I wasn't quite sure. And if so, when would that gate be open? Would it allow access onto the school? Is that the school's responsibility? I just want to make sure that we kind of understand that piece of it.
Yes, of course. Good question. Currently, the city is not proposing any gates. There are no gates added right now on the southern portion. On the northern portion, there is a gate, however, an fence, however, there's a slit in it that would still allow pedestrians to, to walk through, or bicyclists if, if need be.
But that wouldn't give access to the school property, or?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, in, if, if the, the question is after the project, so after the project on the northern side, we, we would not propose, I could show you in the presentation, we were proposing a bollard to prevent vehicles from entering. However, the, the gate there, it would be for school access and use, so we would still allow bicyclists to come in, but, and we would not provide a gate.
And that's to the high school, correct? Or is that?
For the trail.
Miss Pelley?
From, sorry.
If I could help.
Sure.
So, this is at the, the end down by Santa Ana Canyon Road? So, that gate opens into where the football field is and track?
Okay.
So, that, that is, the district's gate, it's closed now, it's, they're gonna pave up to it, but we would still continue to have control of that gate.
That, that's what I was curious.
The bollard, we asked them to add the, the picture down below, that, the cylinder in the middle of the trail, so that cars could not just drive up and down.
Sure.
There were, the reason why they hadn't proposed it originally is they wanted to let their park rangers and police be able to get easier access, but they've agreed to put that in, because we don't want people driving up and down there during the school day, right? It's kind of an attractive nuisance. There are two other gates currently that are further up the trail here, one in the middle of the campus, and another one that's a pedestrian entrance. So, you see the yellow there at the very top? So, that's, that, that opening right there is by the batting cages. And again, that exists right now. It's, it's our gate. We open and close it as we choose to. And then a little bit further up, there's another, a pedestrian access for kids or students that live in that neighborhood. They often walk in that way. And again, we open and close that gate, and they're gonna pave that and grade it, so actually, the grade will be better for people coming in, but that's where that gate is. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think he's pointing to it on the.
Yeah, that, that clarifies. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't gonna gain, there would be any new access or any new duties we would have to do with teachers and people opening and shutting the gates, so.
They're gonna work around the access points we already have, and they've committed to improving those as well.
Great. Thank you. My only other thought, just as a dog owner, I know you mentioned there would be trashcans. It might be good to have some dog waste bag dispensers along the trail. Just a thought.
That's good feedback, and I'm sure our parks team will, will think of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Yamazaki?
You sure you want to go with me first?
Yes, I'm sure we, we can all learn from you.
I'm just teasing. So, just to, so you know, I actually just live right down the street from that area, and I'm very familiar with that trail, and in fact, my kids went to Canyon High School, and so, I know exactly, I used to drop off my kids at the top of the trail as well, so. My question to you is, with that portion of the trail, the entrance that goes from the top, and kids walking down, like, how are we gonna make sure, because I know a lot of kids get dropped off in that area, and they access the school at that upper parking lot coming down? Does that sound familiar?
Trustee Yamazaki, can you clarify? Are you talking at the south end or the north end?
Sort of the north end.
So, at Santa Ana.
Where the library is.
Oh, okay.
That would be south.
Oh, is that south?
Okay, sorry. I just, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
I'll pull it up around here, around this area?
Yes, yeah. So, I, I just want to make sure, like, if there's a bike lane, that's gonna be, you know, with people going quickly, that, you know, during drop-off and pickup time, like, there's, there's a massive number, amount of kids that walk there, and that, how is that gonna be controlled? Like, I don't want to see a bicyclist hit a pedestrian, is my point.
Yes, that, that's a good point. No one wants to see that.
Yeah.
So, two things, we're, we're looking at congest, making a single crossing here, however, the grades prevent that. However, the, the two crossings here will have the RRFBs, and I, I mentioned them, but I'll talk a little bit more in detail. It is a push-button activated light, so a pedestrian would come in, or a bicyclist would come in and push it, and then the, the two rectangular beacons would, would flash in sequential, a, a pre-designed way of flashing that it would alert a motorist, a driver coming through, that there's a pedestrian there waiting or, and or crossing. So, those are enhancements that we would, we would propose on both of the crossings, as well as the high-visibility crosswalks. So, we, we would put the Continental there, big, big yellow because of the school, they're highlighting it. It does provide a calming effect along the street, knowing that there's so many crossings here for, for motorists to be, to be alert while coming down this area.
Okay. I'm trying to visualize it. So, where intersects between the blue and the red?
Here?
Yeah. How does, is, they just cross paths, or?
Yes. So, it is conceptual in nature, so we, we can modify this blue trail to come a little bit more along here, and at, at the crossing level, we would, we would put preferential treatment for the, the blue, which is the bikes, and they would just cross, and they would yield.
Okay. You know, if you know kids, they're not really paying attention all the time to what's happening to the left and the right, and so, they walk in groups, and so, they may not be seeing a bike, or, you know, that would be my concern. I don't know if there's any way maybe of the two lanes can sort of parallel before they cross, or, I, I don't know, I'm not a construction person, but my concern is safety, always.
We could, we could definitely look at, at, see if we could accommodate that, to see if they, they could run a little parallel before they, they cross.
Yeah.
I also mentioned there's an educational component associated with the, with these new features or a new facility that we would, we would provide adjacent to a school, and we would work with the school, the local school there, to provide educational material, even offer assembly or some sort of educational workshop.
Well, I mean, I think a walking path in that area would be really great. It'd be beneficial to a lot of the kids that, you know, are at Canyon Hills, and even with their helpers, if they're walking in a safe area, it would be ideal. But again, I just want to stress the safety part of it, and making sure that those things are taken into consideration when planning.
Yes, of course.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, that back trail, will it still have emergency access, because that is a road that's used for fire lanes, right? Or not? Like, if they have to access the back of the school?
So, currently, our, our fire, excuse me, our, our fire department would not utilize that. To my knowledge, they do not have access on the most northern portion here. I'm not showing it, but there, there is a gate here that would prevent any vehicles from entering it, and that is, to my understanding, controlled exclusively by the school.
But it is a fire lane access, right? I, I know.
I think it can be used as one. There's two gates on that, there's two locks on that gate.
Yes.
One is the school district's, the other, I believe, is the city.
Yeah, they have that yellow.
Right. It's a, it's a, yeah, swinging gate that's open up. So, it's a, yeah, that, so they can get access that way if they need to, to either get to the back of the houses or get to the back of the school.
Right. So, the swing gates wouldn't be there anymore?
Swing gates go away.
Right.
With this model.
And you put.
That way, it doesn't impede the bikes, because that would impede the bikes.
Because I do see some vehicles parked there occasionally, like, especially city vehicles, they park there to do some maintenance in that area.
They do.
There is, there is a heavy shoulder here that would allow for them to implement there. I'll also, I'll also introduce Carlos Castellano, he's our city engineer.
Hello.
I think we've met before.
Provide some clarity on this?
If you could speak into the microphone, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Castellano, city engineer, representing Public Works. The option that is visible on that lower right corner is, is a collapsible bollard. So, that bollard.
Okay.
Has a pin and a lock that allows city officials, obviously, the school district as well, to remove and collapse to get a vehicle through there. The reason why that swing gate is going away is because currently where it sits, it's too close to the roadway. So, if a larger vehicle pulls up, part of it is blocking the trail, and then potentially could be.
Right.
Overhanging into the roadway. So, we, we, we would like that to be removed and have this bollard set. So we would like that to be removed and have this bollard set further in to allow a vehicle to pull in clear width and then allow whoever needs to access that to go in, remove the locks and then be able to drive in. So to answer your question about fire access, absolutely. Fire personnel would be able to access that path as they do today or maybe even better.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make clear that I want to make sure we are able to continue to have the fire access, but not allowing cars just running up there. The other question I had is regarding e-bikes. Are they allowed on this trail?
So e-bikes would be allowed on the trail. However, at this point, once they enter a facility, then they would be able, we would be able to impose speed limits and then subject to rules as opposed to without a trail.
Okay. I just, I'm wondering.
And that's, again, that's part of the outreach campaign. We realize there's an issue with e-bikes and how they're being operated. Part of the strategy is to make sure that with the educational piece, students understand the limitations of those vehicles, e-bikes, on these facilities with posted rules, but also through a program that could get that information clearer to them.
Okay. Yeah, because if kids are walking on that trail to go from one end to the other and e-bikes are near them, I want to make sure that there's some mitigation, I guess. One more other thing. Sorry, I told you I had more questions. That area is, you know, it's kind of secluded behind the school. It's dark. It's, is there, and I know that there's a residential, their backyards are facing the school. But because it's dark and because it's like a prime place for people to just kind of hide out or maybe, so is there like light? Or if there, or is there like maybe an emergency button that you see at the parking lot? Because honestly, if something happens back there, I don't know that anyone will really know. It's pretty secluded. Because like on the other parts of the trail, you'll have people driving by, potentially walking by. But in this part of the trail, in the evening or if it's dark, it's and it is secluded now, so.
Yes, so we have discussed the use of light. However, as part of our project, if we would implement the project and the bike trail, then our bike path hours are from dusk till dawn. Implementing the lights would be prohibited. It would encourage the use of the trail. Plus, we're sensitive to the residents there in regards to light pollution. And then we have a similar trail, exactly like the budding in the back of homes and residents. And it.
Oh, I'm not recommending like full-on lights. I'm just wondering if there's anything because, you know.
So at this time, we're not recommending other street light, any of the lights for because again, it would encourage the use of the facility at night. That's not the ordinances of our facilities. You also mentioned like a button, like an emergency button.
Like a, yeah, you see in the parking lots where someone can hit a button if there's something going on on the trails that is suspicious or?
So we currently do not have those type of facilities anywhere in our existing trails. And we wouldn't, as part of this project, implement one.
If I could just, if I could just add to that. You know, in discussing that with our police department, the cell phone is actually a better tool because, one, people have that with them throughout the trail. If we were to install one of those emergency buttons, you know, they would be at certain distance apart from any point given. So for someone to have to go whatever distance, go push that button, I think people are more comfortable and use their cell phone as needed for safety and security reasons.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Maine?
Hi, thanks for your presentation. I am wondering about this fence and the extent to which we might consider people being able to see students and students being able to see people and increased, you know, amount of that. And maybe we can put in, I understand that that's the district's fence, but have a conversation about a different fence as a result of, you know.
So to confirm, it's going to be the fence, is this the correct fence next to the field?
Yeah.
He's looking at the long screen. He has his pointer.
I'm sorry, I can point this way. Excuse me, is it this, is it this fence along?
Yeah. Has that conversation been, I guess?
Currently, the project is going to be within the footprint and is not proposing to change the fence. It's one of the restrictions on our design to stay within the outside of that fence boundary. As currently, the residents are able to walk and be able to use this trail. So we would not necessarily change the existing use.
But the traffic would increase.
It could potentially increase as part of the, as part of the trail. But for now, we would not.
And then ultimately, if it became a problem, it would be on us, right, to get a better fence? Is that what?
We, we could work with the school if that's a comment that the school would make for us and then see what options we could look at for consideration.
Okay.
Part, part of the reason why a new fence isn't considered is because the elevation there changes quite drastically. There's some areas where if you stand, you can see clearly the roofs of some of the buildings. And then there are other areas like this further southern portion that we're talking about where it's probably at eye level. So that could require, you know, fences that are, that vary in height to provide screening. And that was never something that we considered to be a feature of the project.
So because it's challenging, we're not going to, I'm sorry, I don't get why the.
It's the expense of a fence to be able to build something that high.
Okay. Thank you.
So we would continue to use our existing fence throughout?
That's their proposal, yes. They're trying to avoid having to touch that fence so they don't have to do anything to it. So they're trying to work within the footprint that's already there of the trail. So there are some cases where they're going to have to put in like little retaining walls and things like that because of the soil, the way it slopes. But those fences are further up on the side because the fence isn't consistently right along that trail. It varies on the campus.
I think there's some parts of the fence that are kind of not as strong. So we would definitely, like, I think kids were lifting it and going through the back way to the school.
There are areas in the fence that have been cut. There are, and patched. There are some where the fence is on top of a retaining wall that's about three feet high, but that's probably 20 feet onto the school property from this trail. So they would never touch that. So if it needs to be fixed, it'd be on us to do. And there's some really tall fences because we put screens up because soccer balls were going over into people's backyards. I mean, it's just, it's a mishmash of fencing. But to his point, but yes, it, it, just as they're visible now, students are, it would be visible then. Basically, the athletic fields, right? When kids are changing classes back where their portables used to be, they'd be able to see there also.
They would be more visible.
The visibility, I think, would be the same. However, if there's more people, then that would equate to more people looking, right? With the bikes going by. I mean, just to clarify it, right? I mean, is that, that was our discussion, right? We're not planning to touch the fences.
Right, and just to be clear, it's not so much the cost itself. It's the fact that it was never included in the grant scope, right? So when we applied for the grant, we only envisioned staying within the limits that we've discussed. Any additional costs would have to be covered by the city or by the school district. And again, we haven't had those conversations. We don't know exactly how much, but it is going to be a substantial increase in any type of fencing that exceeds your typical six-foot height. Unfortunately, we can't go back to the grant order to ask for additional funding for those type of elements.
Thank you. Trustee Glass?
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that very much. I guess I have two questions, but one's more historical. So I'm thinking about just the people at home and the folks here. What is the impetus for this? What was the reasoning for this? You guys got a grant. What is the city foresee to be a concern? And why did this come to our attention in the first place?
Yes, thank you for your question. Good question. This project is identified in the city's master plan overview of master bike facilities within our area. This particular project was specifically identified originally because of the high connectivity and really the competitiveness of the grant as we don't have local funds to be able to build a full facility or bike network. So the city relies a lot on its competitive grant nature to be able to go out there and compete against other cities, to be able to get the funding, to be able to connect, excuse me, design and implement and really build these type of facilities. This particular one is competitive because it has the library, the school, the park. On the corner of Noel Ranch and Anaheim Hills, it has senior housing there. It has a little community district where some businesses there. The connectivity points just are favorites for us to be able to compete competitively. And then, I'm sorry, could you ask the second portion of the question?
I didn't ask it yet, but I appreciate that because I'm asking in a sense what the dangers were that would bring it to your attention that would actually end up benefiting our community and our students. So were there dangers in that area that allowed you to think about what different kind of monies would be available in other spaces in order to do this?
Yeah, I think part of the response to your question is the original plan going back maybe just three, four years ago actually extended that trail through the front of the campus. So when we, when we started working with the school, they were actually in the process of that renovation project. And for a long time, we thought that that was the ideal path because it would bring people to the front of the, you know, to the entrance of the campus. In discussing that with staff, in discussing that with other people in the community, we realized that that actually posed greater risk and danger because of the amount of vehicles, buses, also the adjacent schools. So again, just by luck, you could say, you know, we realized there was a nice connection point that currently existed through the back of the property that took us from point eight to ultimately where we wanted to be, which was the bike lanes on Santa Ana Canyon. So it just happened to connect for us and work much better and a lot safer than the first alternative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I recall the first, first iterations of the plans. They were going right in front of Canyon in the parking lot on Imperial where it's super busy. And I was just like, kids in parking lots and Imperial is not necessarily a good mix.
And then I know because of the, I'm going off task, but when it comes to congestion in the area, parents were dropping off kids. And then as a result, that was problematic in the back. And so obviously, we're here with this conversation. And so from your meeting, your community outreach meeting, what were some of the primary concerns from the community? I heard Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, had a concern. And so I was just curious about other considerations from the community when you had your meeting.
Yeah, good question. So as part of the community, I'll bring it back here. So we received a lot of concerns about the two crossings here. Creating the two crossing points is not ideal. So we looked, we committed to look at the engineering to bring back those two trails together to run parallel, to have one connectivity point. The challenge that would prevent it initially is the steep grades. If you're familiar with this area, this is a very steep downhill grade here that comes down, which is not ideal for bicyclists either. So that's the concern and why preliminarily, we had to divert them over down, parallel to the parking lot to ease and have a little more gentle slope to be able to gradually come to that crossing. And then we also considered, well, before going back in details, that's one of the main concerns we had that we heard from the residents. We did hear the e-bike concern and we answered it with the rules and having a PD officer there at the community meeting being able to address that concern. I think those are the two main primary concerns. I don't know if there's anything else that you think.
General landscaping and erosion control in some areas. As you know, that area is quite rugged throughout. And residents would like to see more of a beautification piece to it. Again, the challenge is the scope through the grant is quite limited. We are working through our fire department and our parks department to see if there's opportunities to bring some of those beautification landscaping features that the community would like to see. But unfortunately, not at this point, part of this, part of this project.
And my one last question had to do with the trees. So I was just curious, I like trees. So I was just curious about, there was some concern about that and the city's arborist was going to come out. And so are there already identified trees that may be, you know, in a sense, kind of in a situation where they may be harmed or need to be replaced? Or is it something where they just want to do a cursory look at all the trees along the trail to make sure there isn't that concern?
It's the latter. So if you look at this cross section here, it's the potential for the tree, the roots to be damaged when the grades, once we provide a level surface for the paved area, we might have to go in and erode or cut from the grading anywhere from a foot to a foot and a half of uncovered soil. So once we start looking at that, then there's a potential for damaging of the roots. And then that's why we'll consult with the city arborist to be able to see if that's going to be too much to damage that tree and to remove it at that time instead of allowing it to die slowly and then having a potential hazard of the tree to collapse.
Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-up to trustee Glass's question about community concerns and that had to do with the comment. I see there's a couple of different entrances from neighborhoods. Leandro Street was one, Solomon, and there's another one I can't read because my eyes aren't that good. Was there, was there a survey of the neighbors in that area to find out if that was okay with them? Find out how they felt? Because it sounds like maybe there are some who aren't too excited about it. I'm just curious if you've done that or if that's something that's still going to happen for those different areas?
Yes, and then I'll address a question too from the resident. So these are still, and I know it's hard to tell there, those are still labeled as optional, design options. And from that community meeting, we received the feedback. I did not mention it at this meeting because of the relevancy. I thought maybe it wasn't of that interest. But for us, hearing back the residents, then we would, we would not propose them. The concern was that it would bring in people from outside the neighborhood to park in the area and start using the trail. So we could propose to remove them as part of, they were optional.
I'm just curious if you'll get like a survey for each of those to see how people feel? Because there may be, sometimes it's just the loudest people that, you know, are heard. But you might want to see, I'd just be curious how all of those residents in those different areas felt? If there's going to be a survey or something specifically?
Oh, my apologies. So to determine if we're actually going to implement or not, we'll follow up with more, another community meeting. Right now, it's a conceptual plan. Once we have an engineering plan, then we did commit to have another follow-up community meeting specifically address this item.
Okay, thank you.
Well, these two items, those two connections.
I would also like to follow up on the environmental concerns. So here you have like this environmental document. Is that the impact assessment? And has there, so you mentioned there were some advocacy groups. Like, have people raised concerns about any animals or plants other than trees or, you know, anything else?
So it's the city's due diligence of going through the CEQA process and doing the initial study as part of this project. And I went back to, if you look at the screens, the full aerial. This initial study is a little bit more involved than a traditional project because it does go over undisturbed land at that point. Then we would look at potential native habitat for migratory species that would come through this area. So we would go through that process and identify if any are present.
So if and when you bring the more detailed plans, is your plan also to bring us that report so we can take a look at it? Or could you?
So as part of the CEQA process, it requires notification. If the request is to specifically provide an update to the school, then we could do that. However, it would be the normal notification process for CEQA notices. And I anticipate a negative mitigated declaration or a negative deck for the project.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have another question. And I'm trying to really understand this. It's pretty detailed and again, it's small for us. So the trail that goes behind the school, is it a bike trail only? Or is there an area where pedestrians can walk? Because when I look at this cross section, I only see a bike. I'm assuming it's going one way and then the bike going the other way, like in two different directions. And so I don't see like an area where pedestrians can walk.
Yes, so it would be designated as a class one bike lane, but it would be multipurpose and pedestrians would be allowed to walk.
So they would be walking together basically, I mean, riding and walking together?
Yes.
So then where it crosses right here with the red and the blue going through this page? So people can still walk on the blue path as well?
Yes.
Okay, because I am studying this closer and I know a lot of people drop their kids off at the library and pick up their kids at the library. So kids will come up to this blue, they would follow this blue trail more than the red trail. And so it would have quite a bit of kids going through that trail during pickup and drop-off times. And so I was wondering if the blue trail could have a dedicated walk lane, pedestrian lane? Or is it included? I can't really tell.
So two things that I understood is that the bike facility does not prohibit the pedestrian use unless there's an adjacent pedestrian facility next to it. So in scenarios where they're not adjacent, parallel, then pedestrians would be allowed to use the bike facilities.
So pedestrians would be able to go on this one for sure?
Yes, and then I also heard that the potential for an adjacent facility as well, if that's the request, then we could look at it. This whole area, we're taking a look at, it's conceptual. We could take a look at bringing the red coming down. So this is not by any means final during our final engineering and we'll submit the plans to the school for review as well. We would look at.
So my recommendation is to make sure you take a look at it during the times that school is out and you can see the traffic coming in and out during pickup time.
If I could just add two points. The trail behind the school is very limited to width. So for that segment, we would not be able to add a separate pedestrian path because of the minimum widths that are required.
And the trail behind the school doesn't get used nearly as much for kids. So that's not as much of a concern for me, but I do, but I know sometimes I, because I walk back there occasionally. And so I do see just walkers and people walking their dogs. And it's not a primary path for kids.
And it is quite common. I mean, most trails you see allow for both and they seem to work, right? Including runners and so forth. I'll touch on the last point, which was where the two intersect. I think part of what we can do is through stenciling, ground stenciling and signage, indicate that there is two paths that are crossing. How effective that is with students, I'm not sure. But that's probably the most we can do considering, you know, the site conditions.
So in my opinion, widening the trail at the top between the library and the school is something to think about because of the number of kids who would be on that path during traffic. I mean, like I said, just go there during pickup and drop-off time because you'll see like a train of kids going up to the library because a lot of them go to the library after school. And the other thing is, I see that the red trail just stops right at the top of the school. Are there any plans to continue that or it just stops there? Or can the kids access the parking lot from the top? Like are there any plans to do that?
So to answer, it connects to an existing playground area in this location where then the pedestrians or anyone using the facility would be able to just connect to the, any of the existing paths along the park, which connect all the way to the corner of the intersection of Imperial and Knoll Ranch.
So the park itself is a destination and then the amenities that are within the park would be utilized.
Okay, so you see where the arrow with the two U's and the B on the left side? So kids typically cross that area to go into that upper parking lot? Right there, yeah. And there's nothing?
So that's pretty steep.
Yes.
Some do. Generally, they go further, I'm going to say down that trail towards Santa Ana Canyon Road toward the north. And there is an entrance there. That's where the gate is for kids to get onto the campus. So right where that green light is on there, there is a gate there and there's an asphalt path. It's not shown in yellow. It probably should be, but that's where the entrance is when you walk down that trail. The rest of it is fenced off, but there are, sometimes kids do go right down that hill. It's very steep and it's probably 15 feet. I mean, it's quite a hill. But, so kids would be walking with bikes at least that far to get onto the campus.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's what you're, kind of what you're getting at.
Well, I was just wondering if there's any opportunities to build a little path to go from that trail down into our upper parking lot? I know it's steep, but is there any way to build a path because that's primarily where the kids go?
It's a steep, real steep area. It would have to, it would have to be some stairs or it would have to be some connection. And at this time, if that's a request that the school would make, then we could look at that option. But for now, that, we have not explored that.
Okay, I would like us to look into it. Like my primary concern is always the safety of the kids, right? I used to drop my kids off there and they took that little steep path down. And don't even talk about rainy days and what happens there. But I just feel that since we're doing this and this is an opportunity for us to fix that area, since we will be having construction, concrete and all that coming in, like can, is there any way for us to think about how to make a good pathway for kids to go down, a safe pathway? Or maybe?
If they're open to it, what we can do is we can work with the site staff and see what, how they think best to solve that problem.
I mean, isn't there a safe pathway to schools grant like we can look into as well? I remember reading about that before, but I don't know if it still exists.
Has to do with passing and crossing.
No, I remember at Knoll Canyon, they built the sidewalk and they used a grant.
Right, it's how to walk to the school. So I'm not sure if that, but we've always done that in concert with the city. The city has applied for those grants.
Okay.
And then we've written letters in support of that.
I don't know.
We can take a look at it. I mean, if you guys are willing to look at it, we're willing to look at it.
Yeah, I think for me, that would be an important point because we would be giving up some of our properties and easement and we're actually giving them up, right? So I feel that, you know, the school district should have some sort of benefit out of it as well.
I felt similarly about the fence, like if we're going to be in that area and doing construction and there is an effect on the children, then.
Everybody? Okay, I have some questions. I had, first of all, I just want to say kudos to the city of Anaheim for trying to create green space and hiking trails and things for your residents. I think that our, you know, our students will also benefit from those trails and having that additional green space. I am an avid hiker. My husband is an avid cyclist. And if you know, sometimes those two things are, don't work well together. So we do a lot of hiking up in the, you know, up in the hills. And they have designated areas for cyclists and pedestrians because it is very dangerous. So I did have the same question because it looked like that was only a bike trail. Because you have the red line that says pedestrian hiking trail and this one only said bikeway. But you're saying that you will, the city would allow pedestrians, but it's not specifically a pedestrian trail. It's technically a bike trail, right?
Correct. And it's not just the city. It's a CVC code that allows for the bike trails to be used by pedestrians. Again, when they're not adjacent to a pedestrian facility.
I think I have the same concerns about, well frankly, safety, but also liability. If this is Orange Unified's property and, you know, there is an accident out there because there's pedestrians crossing with a dog or not with a dog, with a bike, that's a liability for sure. And I'm wondering if you can't, that's a separate issue, but also during school hours, if we can't designate school hours as, like that 20 minutes or 30 minutes as purely pedestrian and then open it up to cyclists after that.
So those are valid concerns. We know how concentrated the flows are during arrival and dismissal of any school. The city would take on the liability since we would have the right to use it for a pedestrian and bike facility. Not that that makes it any better, right? The risk is still there, but the city would assume that liability. The challenge with any restriction is only as good as the user, right? It would be very difficult for us to be able to enforce that. We could post anything we want really, right? We could say no bikes between these hours and these hours. Unfortunately, how we enforce that would be very difficult.
Well, with an easement, we're still the owner, so we'd still probably get sued no matter what.
Of course, of course, of course.
Okay, and my question actually is, since this is our property and it's adjacent to the school and it's being used by students, does that trigger any DSA concerns? Do we have to go through DSA given?
We think that it has to go through DSA.
We do already, okay.
Well, once it gets engineered, then it would take it to DSA and let them make that determination.
Okay.
But yes, that's kind of our, that's been our talk and that's what we believe.
Okay. And I had a question about construction and your timeline. You give a timeline as to when you're going to start it. But since you are adjacent to the school and you're talking about, you know, having a jackhammer, getting out the existing cement and having, you know, obviously heavy trucks and different things like that, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be the typical construction hours. Like when we have students on campus, we're not doing construction and jackhammering during class time. So have you considered that in your timeline?
So to answer your question, it's, the timeline is conceptual, but we're always understanding that the district would impose these requirements, noise ordinance requirements, time mitigation requirements. And we could look at doing it during the summer or being creative in terms of the timeline, so.
Right. I just want everybody to be aware that that is a potential issue and could slow it down.
Yeah, I mean, definitely would slow down the progress of the construction. One of the things that we can do would be to limit kind of those louder activities to be done either after hours or on the weekends. Unfortunately, it'd be very challenging to just, to do the entire project outside of working, outside of school hours. That would probably extend the project for well over a year. So I think part of what we'd like to do is be able to work with your staff to determine kind of what activities would be allowed during a typical school day and what wouldn't be allowed and then come up with some kind of a plan to allow the contractor to complete the project and be able to progress on the schedule.
Okay. Okay, that would be great. And I do think there were some good suggestions on, you know, if we are going to lose a portion of where we've been, whether it's been, it hasn't been in good shape and we understand that. But we will lose that section of property and it would be nice to have an alternative entry that wouldn't, you know, cross necessarily this bike path. If there's something we can come up with that's creative so that we can keep students out of the way of bikes. And that time in the morning, not necessarily in the afternoon, but in the morning, that's when a lot of the cyclists are out. So, you know, there very well may be that sort of traffic jam that could be dangerous. So, but again, like I said, I love green space. I love any more hiking and biking that people can do. It's awesome. But we definitely have to consider the safety issues surrounding it and in my mind, the liability issues. So when staff is talking about that. Anybody else? Trustee Vane?
I was wondering if part of the, you mentioned an educational, you know, plan. And I don't know how this works, but if that would also involve coming to the high school and making a presentation to students. Because in hearing about some of Chris's concerns.
What is that news?
Well, the students just sat through a bunch of construction. And so helping them understand, you know, why and where this is coming from and, you know, they're probably tired of it.
Yes, yes.
My question is like, is that education part of the plan?
Right, yeah.
Typical or?
Educational piece could be a lot of different things. In other schools, we've had a partnership with the police department and, you know, we observe and stand at those locations where we perceive the most conflict. And instead of giving citations, it's more of an education lecture, right? To the drivers, to the students, walking bicyclists, all of that. But we've also done kind of in the classroom presentations as well.
And just kind of like here, here's what's going on, you know, back there. Because they're not going to go, I would imagine, most of them to the city website and go through the, you know.
No, absolutely. Yeah, we would.
At an age appropriate.
We would come to you and determine kind of the best vehicle to deliver that message.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. I think we.
No, I just want to thank them too because I didn't get an opportunity to do that, to thank you so much for all this and I appreciate the work that you put into it. And I love the fact that Anaheim is always looking forward to do beautification and improving our community. So thank you.
Definitely. And in terms of going forward, we're happy that staff is going to be working with you moving forward and just taking into consideration some of the issues and questions that we have. Are we good? Okay, that is it. Thank you. Thank you very much. What? Oh. All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Contreras and Mr. Castellanos, and thank you to the board for all of the great questions. And as board president, trustee Erickson said, their district staff will continue. There was no action taken tonight. District staff will continue to work with the city representatives to address some of the questions that you addressed tonight. Great questions and we will keep you posted moving forward with the process. Thank you.
And I'm assuming you're up there for item 3B?
Up for the next presentation there. So again, so tonight we have our second presentation, which also pertains to district property. Over the past several months, we have engaged in discussions regarding the district's SMART plan. One significant component of this plan is the district's asset management strategy and as previously communicated during a This evening, we are presenting historical information regarding the district's Peralta site and its current status in support of our asset management plan objectives. The presentation will outline two distinct processes, our statutory and waiver that may be utilized to lease or sell the property. This presentation provides the board with an opportunity to address additional questions to legal counsel prior to staff proceeding with our recommended process. I will begin sharing the historical background, after which Ms. Abrahamian will detail two processes under consideration. And, oh, it's right here. Okay. So this slide provides you with the history regarding Peralta site. So back in the mid 80s, we, is when the school was closed, and actually it says here, former Peralta Middle School. But for those of us that went to school in the 80s and the 90s, we know that at that time, schools weren't middle schools. They were actually junior highs. So it was Peralta Junior High, which according to the California Department of Education, it closed on November 14th, 1985. After that, and all the way until February 2008, a district's governing board at that time formed an asset management, also known as a 7-11 Advisory Committee. And in July of 2008, the 7-11 committee recommended that the property be deemed surplus. On, in August of 2011, the board authorized the submittal to the State Board of Education for a waiver to request to enable the district to issue a request for proposal, also known as an RFP, for the lease of the property. Then in November of 2011, SBE, the State Board of Education, did approve the waiver and requested and authorized the district to issue the RFP to lease the property. In 2012, after a lengthy procurement process, the board chose not to move forward with the lease of the property. In January, so nothing happened from 2012 to January of 2015, then in January of 2015, the board approved a resolution reconfirming acceptance of the committee's recommendation to surplus the property. In 2020, a second waiver was approved by the State Board of Education, authorizing the lease of the property, which was granted from November 6th of 2020 to November 6th of 2022. So a two-year period, and which has now expired. No action was taken by the district to seek lease proposals and waivers at that time. Then there was a prop, there was talks about property exchange. There were some negotiations that occurred, which are, it's what has happened most recently. However, no exchange occurred. Which leads us to today, our current status. The property is deemed surplus, which means that the district has options on how to dispose of the property to support the district's asset management plan. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Abrahamian, who will share a little more in regards to the two processes that identified, that we, that I stated we would be talking about tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan, for that background and information and for your introduction. I'm Serena Abrahamian with Orbach Huff &amp; Henderson. I was here in November and I did present on what the district's options and opportunities are relating to asset management planning. I think some of you recall that at that time, what we were focused on is what can a district do with its real property assets, keeping an eye towards, of course, the general community good, and also maintaining transparency around processes that are being developed for asset management planning. At that time, we talked about just generally the various options that are available under the education code and some under the government code for selling or leasing property. We also discussed the exchange procedure. We did not talk specifically about any sites. Tonight's a little different because, of course, we're talking about a specific site, which is the Peralta site, where procedures have already been initiated under the surplus statutes. So as Ms. Hogan summarized, a 7-11 or asset management committee made a recommendation for the property to be deemed surplus. That recommendation was accepted by the board, and as you saw in the chronology, multiple steps occurred around that. And most recently in 2015, the board reconfirmed that recommendation and deemed the property surplus. And so moving forward from there, and that, of course, goes to our step one of what's been completed. The very first step under the surplus statutes, and you'll see that there are three, as we've outlined in the presentation, is that the board has to take action to deem the property surplus. So as we've talked about, that has occurred here. And what that authorizes when a board deems property surplus is that the property can be leased for up to a 99-year term or sold. Surplusing is required in order to sell district property. In order to lease district property, there are other alternatives outside of the surplus process, which, again, we talked about in November, and I'm certain we'll continue to review as we move through the district's asset management planning. Step two of the process is the public offering and notice procedures that are required for surplus properties. After a board deems property surplus by approving a resolution, certain public agencies that are outlined in the education code, and we'll actually see in more detail on the next slide, have to be notified that the property is available for sale or lease, whatever has been determined by the board, or if it's both, that would be put in the notice letters. In addition to sending out direct mailed notices to these agencies, the district would also, by newspaper publication of the resolution that was approved deeming the property surplus, put all public agencies on notice by, that, of course, that notice would be published for three successive weeks in the newspaper. And then, of course, depending on which agency we're discussing, they have a certain amount of time to express their interest and initiate negotiations with the school district. So the 40 or 60 days you see in that last bullet, the 40 days refers more to the planning departments of cities or counties. They have to be notified as part of this process, and they have 40 days to provide their input. So, and then the 60 days applies just generally to the public agencies at large. Oh, that worked. Oh, you did it, okay.
Magic.
Okay. Sorry. So, of course, as I said, we have in some detail which public agencies have to be notified under what we're calling the second step, which is the right of first refusal step of public agencies. So you see there, and I'll just provide some examples, the regions of the University of California, the city and county agencies where the property is situated. Some of that is detailed in the statutes. But what is of best practice and a general rule is that, of course, you don't just mail to the main city mailing address. You would want to send it to as many agencies within the city or the county that you think would potentially be interested in the property, so they have an opportunity to receive the information and make a determination if they want to make an offer on it. And then, of course, any public entity that has submitted a written request to be notified also receives notice as part of this process. I do want to note here that sometimes there is a little bit of confusion because there used to be a statute that sunsetted in 2016 where charter schools received the first right of first refusal. So they were at the top of the list of the agencies that received notice. That statute has sunsetted. So the district is no longer obligated to make, of course, that public offering to the charter schools. They can always request to be notified. And then, of course, the district would notify them.
Yeah, I think maybe, do you have a specific question on who has to be notified?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
All right, thank you. The question I have is, so if a public agency is interested in our properties, are there restrictions as to how they use it? Like, can they hold it as part of their real estate, I don't know? Or do they have to use it for, like, schools, buildings? Or can they just hold on to it and sell it down the line to a private entity, like...
Okay. Actually, if we're going to ask really detailed questions, we'll wait until after, because we do have public comments. I thought you were going to clarify a public agency. I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you were going to ask.
Okay, I'll wait till the end.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, of course, as we've been walking through the steps, now we're on step, we're still on step three, but relating back to the public offerings component, which is, what are the various options that are available to the district based on the public offerings that either are received or not? So if offers are received from public agencies, of course, the district may negotiate and the board may consider reaching an agreement. The board may also reject offers and move to what we're going to call the next phase of the surplus process, which is the public bidding component. If no offers are received, the district can move to the formal bidding or public bidding procedure that we'll see in the next few slides. Importantly, we do get this question, so I just want to frame it as a question and then answer it, is that, no, the district does not have to sell to a public agency that makes an offer. It's just like any other interested buyer, interested less see. That entity makes the offer, and then the district engages in a arm's-length negotiation and determines, is this the right step for the district to take to enter into an agreement with this public agency? So, formal bidding. So what I'll call the last step of this process. Formal bidding is, of course, now we've gone through the public offering process. If there are no interested public agencies or the district does not want to engage with a public agency or does not want to sell to one, then it would be opened up to all interested parties through what's called the formal bidding procedures. You see there that what this really entails is steps for formal bidding to the highest bidder for sale or lease. So procedurally, what would occur here is that the board would adopt what's called a resolution of intent to lease or sell. And that resolution has to be pretty detailed about, of course, the property description, what's the property that's being considered for sale or lease, minimum price, and then, of course, terms and conditions that the district's offering for the sale or lease. And then importantly, the date that the bids for the property will be considered. And that's usually, and under the statutes, to occur at a subsequent board meeting where those bids are received and considered by the board. Like we've seen with the public offering, the district must post and publish notice of the bid in the newspaper. Bid opening occurs on the day and time set in the resolution. So again, the resolution has to be pretty specific as to those items. Oral bids can be considered if they're received. And importantly here, and you'll see why as we move to the next few slides, the board can accept the highest responsible bid or reject all bids. So again, the district has flexibility. You're not required to accept the highest bid. But I do want to just emphasize that this is a procedure where the highest bidder would be the party that would be awarded the bid if the board so chose to do.
So, to clarify that, we get five bids. We have to take the highest one or reject everything.
Correct. But of course, it would be the highest bid, but also that meets the terms and conditions that are outlined in the res, yes.
Right. And if they reject, then you move down to, let's say that you accept it and they decide they don't want to do it, then you would move to the second one?
Yeah, you can. Yeah. And then I think the goal would be to outline those procedures as clearly as possible in the resolution of intent so that everybody knows how the board's going to navigate that process. So we, what we discussed were the surplus procedures and steps. There is an opportunity for the district to seek a waiver of those statutory requirements. So of course, we've said the board deemed the property surplus by approving a resolution. The board can seek a waiver or direct staff to seek a waiver of the public offering and public bidding procedures or just the public bidding procedures. And what that means is that an application would be made to the State Board of Education, that the State Board of Education would consider requesting that those statutes be waived and the district be allowed to put the property out through what we call a request for proposal process. So in other words, the district would issue a request for proposal to all interested parties. So the public agencies wouldn't necessarily get an opportunity first, and then it goes to formal bidding. Everybody would receive the opportunity at the same time. And it is a process where the district has a lot more control, and we'll see through the next few slides why that is. And then importantly, as part of the process, the State Board of Education, if they approve the application, would have their own conditions for further transparency around the RFP process. So it's not just what does the district typically do with an RFP, it's also what is the State Board of Education going to require? Next slide. Just a little bit of detail about what the waiver process entails with the SBE. Importantly, the district board has to consider a waiver resolution. So that would authorize the district team to make the application to the State Board of Education. And of course, that could be considered at the next board meeting on March 12, 2025. What also occurs as part of that process is there's a public hearing requirement. So the public would have an opportunity prior to the board considering the resolution to provide their input during a public hearing. Then, of course, the board would consider, and if approved, the SBE application, usually they require a two to two and a half monthly time they'd like you to get it in before their next meeting date. So you see there that we've outlined in the third bullet what those upcoming meeting dates are for the State Board of Education. And that's May 7th or 8th, or July 9 and 10. And you wouldn't know until you get closer to the meeting dates which day you're agendized for. What we like to do is, of course, get the application in as quickly as possible. So if the board approved the staff to seek the waiver, on March 13, the application would be filed with the goal of hopefully getting on the May agenda. But with a lot of waiver applications being made these days by school districts for the very reason of flexibility, sometimes you are getting pushed to the next board meeting. So it could very well be that the application would be considered at the July meeting. Just some overview and benefits discussion of the public offering or statutory process versus the waiver process that we've reviewed. As you see, both approaches are very transparent. Of course, under the formal bidding, it's a board process with board meeting day, consideration resolutions, and then, of course, the bids being considered in a board meeting. If you issue or choose to go in the direction of directing the district team to seek a waiver, issuing an RFP for sale or lease provides a lot of flexibility to the district because of the reasons, some of the reasons we discussed. The other procedure is pretty rigid, complex, and it is a little bit difficult to administer. And I will say, just from my personal experience, having helped districts through that formal bidding process, there are very many occasions where no bids are received, just because I think bidders get a little bit overwhelmed with the fact that the bids are received during a board meeting and the formal bids versus the oral bids, written bids versus oral bids, some of those complications, it is a little bit difficult to administer. But probably the most important point, and I think one that resonates with boards, is that, and I'm going to draw a comparison, I'm sure you're all familiar with some of the ways that construction projects are procured. So under design bid build, typically the boards, you're limited to accepting the lowest responsible, responsive bid. Similarly here, you're bound to the highest bidder. If you have the flexibility of being able to identify what are important evaluation considerations for the board and for the district team, those can be considered, including community good. So the district can evaluate, not just based on price, but other considerations that may speak to the board and are important to the board are important to the community. So you, again, your hands are less tied when it comes to evaluating proposals that come in the door. And then importantly, of course, the district has requested waivers on this site, and they've been granted twice. So that's a pretty good precedent here. And just a little bit about lease versus sale, and just wanted to... And just a little bit about lease versus sale, and just wanted to cover a little bit about why we're finding more and more that districts are tending to veer towards lease structures rather than a sale opportunity, because of course leases generate long-term revenue streams while the district has the opportunity to continue ownership of the property. And then it's not just a one-time payment, it's a continuing dividend that gets paid out over time. And with, of course, in this case, the fact that the property has already been deemed surplus, you're looking at a very long lease term of up to 99 years if the district chose to pursue that, which of course means that there would be a revenue generating opportunity for very many years for the district. And then another component that districts really focus on is that lease proceeds, you have a lot more flexibility with how they get used. Generally speaking, it's in any way that the board directs, of course, with some limitations. Whereas sale proceeds have to primarily go and are restricted for, and I'm just going to use, describe it kind of in a shortcut way, but for facilities and are put back into facilities as opposed to having the flexibility of general lease revenue. And then lastly, just wanted to cover at a very, very high level, so this is at a 10,000 foot level, what would an RFP look like for sale or lease? This is assuming that the waiver application has been made and granted. What would the be issued as what we're calling an RFP on behalf of the district? So of course, you'd want to include the background of the project, development objectives, and the district's mission and goals. What is it that the district's seeking to accomplish either through a late, a sale process or a lease process? The timeline for submitting proposals. And then, of course, you'd want to give interested proposers an opportunity to ask questions and receive responses from the district in order to produce a better product. And then you'd want to outline what are the required contents of the response? What is the district looking for and how the the proposal should be organized? Typically, we'll request a letter of interest. We'll ask them to include a table of contents and an executive summary of what they're proposing. So of course, if it's a long-term lease, what is the project that you're proposing? What is the long-term lease objective? And for them to describe it as best they can. And then, again, proposal requirements, you want them to be as detailed about that as possible. Some examples, what are they proposing as far as the compensation offered to the district for sale or for lease? And then, of course, what is the financial strength of the proposing firm? What type of experience do they have with similar projects? All of those very important things that the district would want to consider when evaluating a proposal. The second to last bullet, we talked about a little bit, which is you have the flexibility to include what is your evaluation criteria and what are you looking at in addition to price or lease revenue? So if it's a community good component, if it's, we really want a developer who has a lot of experience or a buyer who has a lot of experience in this community. Those are things, criteria that can be considered and included in the district's scoring. And then lastly, the terms and conditions of the RFP, like anything else, we'd want to explain to the potential proposers under what conditions and what should be incorporated as they're thinking about making a proposal. And then importantly, that any response they provide, of course, would be subject to the California Public Records Act request because that's something that comes up often. So to the extent that they're submitting anything that's more confidential information, that should be marked as such. So there are more specific instructions that we give to proposers within the terms and conditions section. So that's generally it at a high level. And of course, we would develop all the specifics.
Thank you so much. I think we're going to move to public comment, and then we will move to board questions. Actually, I know we're going to do that. I don't even think it.
Okay. I will move my stuff.
Okay. We have three public comments, and first up is Cora Lee Newman.
Good evening, Chair Erickson and members of the Orange Unified School District and Superintendent Christensen. I am glad and pleased to be here this evening on the subject of Peralta. My name is Cora Lee Newman, and I am the President of Government Solutions, Inc. We are a government and community outreach firm with over 30 years' experience practicing here in Orange County. I was very pleased to hear the word "community good." I'm glad that that could potentially be the criteria in the waiver process because I think that you have a community that wants to be involved here, and there can be a lot of community good that comes out of the reuse of this site. I am here on behalf of Orange Lutheran High School. As you know, we did present, we've had a strong interest and a viable interest in the purchase and redevelopment of Peralta. Dr. Mary Scott, CEO of the Orange Lutheran High School, testified to this board on January 23rd. In that testimony, she outlined her long-term views and interests in Peralta and a proposal's plan. Being an expert in government relations and community outreach, again, I like the fact that with a waiver process, which we would hope is what you go to, you do have to consider the criteria of community good and community input. And in that framework, I am an expert in government relations, and I thought it was important for the board to understand that the city of Orange just recently changed the zoning on this property to public institution. That happened last year, and it went to both the Planning Commission and the City Council, and it was unanimously approved by both bodies with the City Council's final approval on July 23rd, 2024. I think that's a very important aspect of the property criteria on Peralta. And I want to read from the staff report. It says, well, state law generally allows residential development where general plan allows for it, and zoning does not. If, however, residential is not allowed in the general plan, no residential is allowed. And that is the status of Peralta. This is a very strong and recent directive from the city of Orange that says that residential development is prohibited on the Peralta site. And I think it's just, that's a very important part of this process in terms of going out to bid, and that's why I'm very happy to hear that you might consider the waiver process and don't have to accept the highest bid, which would be potentially residential. As you know, just for the new board members, residential was not here. I think that got missed in the presentation. It did come before you, and it failed. And because there was lack of community support, and the board withdrew the residential proposal. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Olga Bevs.
Hello, board members. My name is Olga Bevs, and I was here previously on January 23rd, also representing Olu. I had some comments prepared. They did not seem to be relevant, so I'm just going to thank you for making this a transparent process and including us in it. We appreciate what you're doing here tonight.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Darren Kempkis.
Good evening. My name is Darren Kempkis. My wife and I are 35-year residents on Cumberland Road here in Orange. That's adjacent to the Peralta property. In the past two years, I've knocked on hundreds of doors of our neighbors, talking to them about the Village at Orange and the Peralta property. We're excited to hear that Orange Unified is finally considering to put to rest Peralta, the whole limbo state of that. We're also hoping that our great neighbor, Orange Lutheran High School, will be at the top of the school board's list to purchase or lease the property to this outstanding, for them to be able to build an outstanding athletic facility for Orange Lutheran and our community. I know our neighborhood is adamantly opposed to any housing development at Peralta, as was just mentioned by one of the other speakers, when we went to battle as a neighborhood not to have those 300 condos put on the property. But I am confident that the board would get overwhelming support for Orange Lutheran building a athletic facility at that site. And from the presentation, thank you, ladies, it sounds like that waiver would be a great option for our school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Okay. Head back up, and we can start with questions. It looks like Trustee Glass has so many written down. We'll start with him.
Thank you for visiting us again to give us updates. We appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
A lot of, a lot of what was stated, you know, again, this has been, this is new-ish, but again, when you continue to explain it, it's, it brings up new and different conversations and, in a way, implications, right? So my first question has to do with the fact that back in 2010 or 11, the property was surplus, right?
Yes.
We have to surplus it again? Is that, is that how that works?
No. So that step, which is step one, is completed.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's no need to do that again?
No.
But if we wanted to do, because that's also RFP, correct? Is that also in the same?
It's for both. You have to, you have to declare the property surplus before you can go either path.
Correct. But so we don't have to do that again? All that's completed under one?
Correct.
However, we still have to go to the state.
So the next steps in order to seek a waiver would be, number one, the district's board would approve the waiver resolution after a public hearing and would give direction to district staff to make an application, the State Board of Education. The application would be made and considered at a State Board of Education hearing, yes.
And that would still be the second time, right? That would?
That would be the third time.
The third time, okay. So I'm on board with you. I understand.
2011, 2020, and maybe 2025.
Right. So my other question has to do with, in this, in this particular conversation about the the leasing. So the 99-year lease, and I'm not sure if this was even a part of Trustee Yamazaki's question, but it had to do with what a person can do with it. If we were to lease it to school X or entity X, right? And we said 99 years, and they didn't do anything with it right away. Could they just sit on that and they use it as something they just hold on to? And they extinguish that 99 years if they, if they chose to do so?
In the RFP, the goal would be to get as much information from the proposer as what their anticipated use is for the property. And under lease provisions, the district can do, include terms and conditions that would require development within a certain amount of time. And, and consider how that that could be rolled out and how that could be negotiated with a potential lessee.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Trustee B.
Thank you for this presentation. First of all, in 2012, there was a lengthy procurement process. What does that exactly mean? There was, we authorized this RFP, and then there was a really long RFP process, and maybe we can have, yeah?
I was actually looking at the superintendent for.
Yeah, they weren't here. I was.
Sorry.
That's fine. So there was an RFP process. We received proposals. The board made a decision on a certain developer. That developer brought forward what their proposal would be, brought forward what kind of revenue would be generated, all of that. The community was opposed to that and came out very strongly against those proposals, as the gentleman spoke accurately, that there was not support in the community for it, and the decision was to not move forward with that. So that just kind of died. I mean, that's the cliff nose version.
Okay. Does it make sense for us to kind of review those previous ones? I know, obviously, like they, they would apply again, and the numbers would be different, but just kind of to have a sense of, you know?
We can see what we have in the file. If we could show you like what the development was that the community was not in favor for, but as the gentleman said, it was a number of condos or apartment, it was apartments, had to be apartments. And it was, there were three stories backed up against single-story homes. And then there was talk about moving them away or trying to fix that, but the outreach wasn't sufficient to overcome the opposition. And so there was a lot of opposition, and the board decided to not move forward with it. And they may have even withdrawn. I don't recall, to be honest with you.
I guess it would be helpful for me to know if, if we were to move forward with the RFP process to ask that those entities that are interested, if they had applied before, you know, like?
We can, we could put that in. You know, a lot of this, as the, kind of going off script here, but if we're going to move forward and do the waiver process, in the meantime, while we're waiting for the Department of Education to do something, we'll be meeting with the board, trying to determine what are those parameters? What does that look like? What do you want to see? And we will craft that document so that it's hopefully as inclusive as you want it to be, including parameters on, as Dr. Glass asked about, if people don't develop the property, we can also put in there, however, there will be a minimum lease payment of X amount of dollars that if it's not developed after a year, that increases to something. If it's not developed after two years, it increases to something else to encourage people to do that development. And it can be structured in many different ways.
Thank you.
That okay? Yeah, thank you. I always check with the lawyer.
What are some examples of the sorts of things that the State Board of Education would require?
So actually, they require a lot of transparency. They want when the proposals from the RFP process have been received and the board is ready to consider them, they want a very open and transparent process around the, how the board reviews that and the board meeting. And then we can, depending on how they outline what those conditions for approval are, that's what they call them, we can, of course, guide the district team and through them, the board, on how to do that to meet the State Board of Education requirement.
Process requirements.
Yes.
Okay. You had mentioned scoring, and community good is kind of, you know, so would we then be required, or is there a certain circumstance where we would have to score what community good is? Because that's a little bit squishier.
So of course, you don't have to include community good. Some districts would like to do that.
Or what happens when that is included? And then how do you, how is that measured?
And, and for each district, that community good definition is a little different, so you want to be as precise as possible in the RFP document as to, A, the fact that that is going to be a criteria, and what does that mean? So that proposers know how to meet it if they're looking to do that.
Okay.
And, and of course, that would come from further discussions with the board as to how that gets defined.
Okay.
I, I can give you an example. There was a site, for example, where it, it was surrounded by a lot of medical facilities. And so what the board was interested in is that if a medical office or facility is going to be built at that site, that it continue to cater to underprivileged community members. And so that was the community good aspect that was defined in some detail in the, in the proposal, in the request for proposal.
Okay. Thank you. And with the 99-year thing, we just, an option is to give it a lease for these 99 years. And generally, in that long period of time, there's not a, after five years, we chat again, and it's just like 99 or nothing?
No. So it's up to 99. So the district can specify if it wants to consider up to 99-year lease terms or something lower than that.
I guess what, why is it, is there a 99 law? And then?
So the, the reason for it is because with the surplus procedures, oftentimes, the leases that the district wants the flexibility to consider are more development projects where a developer would be investing quite a bit of.
Right, like why would they?
Yes, money into developing those particular facilities. So they want to be able to recoup that through the length of the lease term. If they're putting all of that out in the beginning of the process to build certain improvements, they, they wouldn't necessarily be inclined to do that if they only had a, for example, 20-year lease term. So it gives them a lot of, like, it gives the district flexibility to consider proposals for maybe larger-scale developments for that site.
But we can also say, you know, if it's X sort of situation, then we But we can also say, you know, if it's X sort of situation, then we would want to revisit in five years and make another assessment. Like there's basically lots of options.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So property is one of our biggest assets, and the Prata property is obviously a very valuable one. It's one of the few biggest parcels in the city of Orange that is available, and it's in the center of the city, and it's in a great location. And we've hung on to it for a long time, and I admit that we need to do something about it. But I also know that once we sell it, it's gone forever. And so I think we need to be mindful as a board to consider all of our options. Selling and leasing is definitely one of them, but I would definitely like to see how this fits into our master facilities plan, because I'm still not comfortable with just selling it or leasing it for a long term, not knowing how it fits in our overall goals, because we have talked about other things in the past. And I also want to, I have some concerns too. Like I know we have people who went out into the community and are doing their bidding and trying to convince the community this is the best fit, but have we done the same thing? Like I'm concerned, like somebody's getting, one entity is getting their narrative out there saying, "This is great," and talking for us in some ways. I would like us to see what the community would like as well. I mean, surely, I know that they weren't not interested in apartments, but what other options are there? Are they interested in a recreational facilities that would benefit both our schools and the community? And we haven't talked about it, but we're at this point where it feels like it's going to be this, and I'm not comfortable with it either. So I kind of feel like we're going down a path that's not led by us, and I have concerns about that. That being said, I had tried to ask earlier about public agencies offer requirements. So this is just to alert the public agencies, this is what we're doing. There's no requirements to sell to a public agency unless they were the highest bidder?
Under the surplus statutes, yes. That would be, those would be the steps.
Okay. Now-
Sorry, I was just going to add, and I'm sorry, that additionally, the board has the option to reject, even if there are offers. That's also an additional option on there, and I was trying to get to that slide.
Yeah, they can reject all offers.
Correct.
But they can't pick and choose an offer.
And I'll let Serena answer to that.
Unless there's like a condition that they didn't meet in our-
In the resolution of intent, correct.
Yeah, and you have to go through RFP process, right? And then you score, and then you can decide, well, you weren't the highest, but we think you're the best fit. So then you can pick that best fit.
Okay. So just say if a public agency does end up getting it, is there any, we can restrict or them as to what they can do with it? Or can they, what if a public agency bids on it and then turns around and sells it?
So would this be if, under a purchase scenario?
Yes.
Yeah, it is a little bit difficult to restrict under those conditions if we are selling. Probably the best way to potentially restrict it a little bit is if we can put a deed restriction into the deed, the transfer deed, that says, okay, it can't be utilized for XYZ purpose in the future, in order to limit it to what they could, if they were to sell it to another entity or another buyer, for that buyer to also be subject to those same restrictions.
Okay.
But it is difficult to implement.
Yeah, the other question I had was regarding, well, I lost my train of thought, so go ahead and go on, sorry. I was trying to process what you were saying, and so I'll come back.
We'll have another opportunity, trustee Pelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, great presentation. I'm glad you're really breaking it down, because even though we did hear some of this, we need to keep hearing it so we can really understand it. And I appreciate your patience with us. I had one question, this might sound, well, I have two questions. This one might sound kind of silly. I know you said, we kind of have set a precedent now with the SBE waivers, which is a good thing. I had seen it as, are they going to say, forget it, you guys have let the other ones expire? That's not a bad thing necessarily.
They could. They do ask a lot of questions when they receive an application, and more so now because they are getting a lot of waiver requests, so that, because districts are pursuing the more flexible option of RFPs. But we can address that if we get that question with the district team. Usually, what will happen, just so, having gone through this a few times, is a state board of education representative will reach out with a number of questions and some asks. Please do X, Y, and Z in order to complete your application. In some cases, they'll request that, for example, a committee, either a Brown Act committee or an advisory committee to the board, receive information about the waiver or about the state board of education process, and they want to know that you've dotted that I and crossed that T. So there are certain requests they'll make, and we're able typically to address them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just thought they might just think, why are they doing this again? They're just going to let it expire, but it's a new board, so hopefully they'll take that into consideration. I think the only thing I, I had a question, and I, you may have sort of answered it with trustee Yamazaki's question, but if we were to do a waiver and look at lease, would we be able to put, I know we can't keep controlling it when it's leased out or it's no longer ours, but would we be able to put some parameters whether they can sublet, you know, to other entities and things like that?
Actually, you have a lot more control with a lease.
Okay, so we can do things like that?
Yes.
And say, you know, I just worry, I think because of what's happened with it in the past, and we kind of had a near miss there that we fortunately didn't have to go through with, but I'm just worried about somebody leasing it and then saying, you know, all of a sudden, oh, now we're going to do something with it that may not be in the best interest of our schools, of our neighbors, you know? So we do have control with, more control with the lease, obviously, than with the sale, but we can put those kind of parameters.
Yes, because you're still, you're the property owner, so it has to meet your needs and your vision for the site.
Sure, okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much for the thorough presentation. I cannot believe it's been 40 years since I was in the ninth grade at Yorba Junior High School in Peralta Close. But I'm happy we're moving on this. I don't know what way we're going to go, obviously, and I don't think anybody else on the board does. But I'm with trustee Yamazaki on being cautious. On the other hand, it's been sitting for this long, so I mentioned earlier in another meeting that we need to do something. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, 40 years, wow. I know, and I played at Peralta Junior High and when I went to McPherson Junior High. So it's been a long time, a long time with nothing happening and us really not getting the benefit out of this property that I believe we should, that I believe we owe. I'm grateful you're bringing this forward again, because as trustee Yamazaki said, she felt like we're going down a path and we haven't been leading the path. We've sort of been following the path. And I see this presentation and which way we go, whether it's statutory or waiver, as us leading the way. We get to dictate what's going to happen to our property. And I agree, I do have concerns, and, you know, there have been people, professionals out there talking to the community for years about just one project. And so that does make it a little bit difficult, because, you know, the community, you know, may not be as open, but that's life. I mean, that's the way it's been, because we have chosen not to do anything with it. So how, my question was, how does that rezoning impact us? Because obviously, when we, when it was looked at before, it was a residential, it was zoned for residential, or it could be, I think it was mixed use or something. And so what is the zoning now?
The zoning, as mentioned earlier, it is for public use, so that zoning was changed, as was mentioned in July of 2024. So that is something that has changed from previous. You're correct on that.
And what is public use?
Where it wouldn't be for residential development.
Okay, so not commercial, not residential, but something else? Okay. Is that purely educational, or it can be, what other thing falls into that?
And I'd have to look more closely at the municipal code, but of course, there would be allowable and permitted uses, and we'd have to see what those are as specifically outlined in the municipal code. It's a little different for each city, as you know. But what I wanted to say is that for any potential longer-term use, if the district is considering a lease, the lessee would have to go through an entitlement process for the project that they're proposing. That's why it's so important for us to understand through the RFP process, what are they proposing? And then what you build into a lease typically is a due diligence phase, and of course, the board knows this, I just want to recap it so that we're all on the same page, but there would be a due diligence phase, an entitlement phase, and then the lease phase kicks in. And the due diligence is, they've now proposed a project, can they actually build what they're proposing to build? So that's number one. If they think they can, they would typically give the district a notice to proceed to the entitlement phase. That's when they have to go through all the permitting agencies, the city, if the county's involved, the county, other potential entitling agencies, to get the approvals to build the project that they've proposed. And so if they have to get a general plan amendment or a zone change in order to accomplish that, they will have to go through the city for that process. And that is usually when, for example, the environmental review occurs as well. So under the California Environmental Quality Act, they would have to get those approvals during that entitlement period.
So I understand we have a lot more flexibility with the RFP, right? And we can pretty much almost tailor an RFP to really whatever we have as a priority as a board. So the board has to decide, what is our priority? Is our priority revenue stream? Is our priority, you know, something else? Is it, you know, we want our students to be able to use it? Is it, what is the, what is our priority? And we build that into an RFP. But the question I have is, on the statutory side, when we do that resolution, is there much to sort of, I'll say customize it, or is that just a pretty standard resolution?
You can try to customize it as much as possible. Typically, like what is a really good example is if it's a formal bid-for-sale process, you'll attach the purchase, the proposed purchase and sale agreement, and then ask that the bidders comment on it as part of the process, in addition to making their bid on the price. So there are typically like best practices around how you can get as much information from them as possible, based on what the district is putting forth as a resolution and agreement package.
Okay. I think that is it for me. Thank you, and thank you for the timeline, because I've been asking for that timeline for a while, and it's interesting. I just, I guess I just didn't realize it had been as long as it has sitting there, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
The district team worked hard on that timeline, yeah.
Ms. Yamazaki, trustee Yamazaki, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for asking those questions, because that's what I was going to ask earlier, and I just popped out of my head, but I wanted to talk about the zoning, and you did answer some of them. But is it possible to get more information on the current zoning and what it's zoned for? Because it was mentioned it's a public institution, and if it's a public institution, it limits RFP, right? I mean, what we can get? I mean, is there a bidder going to be going, you know, if it's zoned for, or do they take a chance and try to do the entitlements afterwards, or how does that work?
So I can speak to best practices on this. Usually, it really helps for the district to do their own assessment of what is the highest and best use and opportunity for that site. So maybe bringing a real estate consultant on board or some consultant who can help with that aspect of the due diligence work. And then that would be married up with the district's vision for the site, considering the community good, considering the transparency aspects we've been talking about, and get feedback on that vision, and then incorporate it in an RFP that gets issued for proposers to respond to.
Okay.
So that is one way to approach some of the questions and concerns you have.
I would like a clear definition of what the zoning is right now-
Absolutely.
-and what's allowed, and what's public good? Is it a theater is a public good? Is it a swimming pool? Is it a grocery store could be a public good in a sense, right? So I want more clarity on that.
Happy to provide that.
Superintendent, I think, wanted to clarify some-
If I could just add in there too, so she talked about the three phases. So when you open the bids, it's not like, we open the bids and we cash the check. There's a few steps we have to go through, and you could talk again about the due diligence, right? And then the getting title, getting the-
Entitlements.
Entitlements. And then you execute kind of the final agreement. So somebody may bid on this, and assuming they're going to be able to get this approved, whatever their project is, regardless of what the zoning is. So just because it's zoned one way doesn't mean it has to stay that way.
Okay.
All right, so that's-
But they have to go to the city to-
Sure, right. They have to invest in the time and energy and money to do that.
During that process.
Correct, so they have, there's a period of time that's designed for them to do that.
Okay.
Just, I mean, so I just, we can focus on what it's zoned as right now, but we can spend a lot of time on that, but that doesn't mean that the proposers-
Doesn't.
-are going to be limited to that-
Okay.
-because they're not.
Okay. That provides a lot of clarity too.
I know what entitlements meant before, but that means changing the zoning. Long ago, I was confused by that, so that's basically all it is.
I think it would help me to know the cost of one of these real estate experts, and, you know, if we have a list of, you know, maybe we've used some people in the past, or, you know.
Those would all be things that we would be working on behind the scenes and making sure that we're continuing to get that information to the board, should the board, you know, concur with us moving forward with the waiver for the March 12th meeting. And during that time, as we've mentioned, we'd be doing some work behind the scenes and getting all that information to you, definitely. And also following up with trustee Yamazaki's question and getting all of that detailed information to you.
So while I think this is, tonight's information, but we had heard that there was interest in moving forward, both from the community and from the board, so, but none of these things are limiting. So the board always has the option to not move forward at various steps, including at the very final step of awarding.
Correct.
So just so you, there's flexibility here at some level, but you all would need to decide what that's going to look like.
And I know you're at a disadvantage, because you just came on the board in December, but we have had some conversations, and so, you know, we'll be able to probably provide information that maybe we had before that's not confidential, but, yeah. Okay, anybody else? Are we? Okay, thank you very much for a very, very informative session. I think this board is committed to trying to solve the problem of Peralta in some way.
Right. And as Mr. Christiansen said, today's not an action item, however, we just want to make sure that the board is concurring with us bringing forward for the March 12th, and we would bring that waiver in again, as Mr. Christiansen said, there's no commitment there at any phase of the process. The board has not committed to any of that, but we do want to make sure that we're moving forward, so we will be presenting that and making sure that we're following with the public hearing and everything that has to happen with that waiver process.
So do we provide direction for staff?
It's just direction, yeah, just saying that you're in concurrence with, that staff moving forward with that.
That seems to be the-
Yeah, I think what we would do is move forward with it, have it ready to go, then the board could choose not to approve it.
Either vote on it or not.
Right, vote it up or vote it down.
But going forward with preparing it for the next meeting is probably appropriate. Okay.
Could I also request that we have information on the master facilities plan as far as what we talked about during that time for that property? we talked about during that time for that property?
Well, just for the waiver, it wouldn't matter, because that's just getting the waiver from the state.
But I just want, you know, all the board members to be informed as to having that information, so they can make that decision at some point.
Sure, of course.
Definitely.
Happy to do it.
I mean, once we get past the first stage-
Happy to have her do it. Happy to say, a lot of things will happen.
It can happen concurrently, right?
This will wait.
We will definitely follow up with that.
Make us all look good.
All right, absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to adjournment. Meeting is adjourned at seven oh nine PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming and spending time here.